January fourteenth, special meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Um. Councilmember Revelle?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Burns or Councilmember Sefredin?
Thank you, clerk. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. We'll begin the morning's proceedings with public comment. We start with those who have signed up in person to speak in person. Ray Friedman.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year to everyone. I'm sorry I didn't speak at Monday's council meeting. And I missed the, I heard the discussion about Harley Clark and was really disappointed that we couldn't get some agreement between the parties in order to, we started this discussion with Harley Clark two years ago and for some six years ago. And we couldn't get an agreement. Now Artisan Book House backed out. That's... So what do we do now? And what happened to all the money that Artisan Book House raised? And what's the penalty, I guess, for backing out of that agreement and leaving the city hanging? So of the goals, I was at the, the goals meeting, I think it was in 2017, was it? When we had the last, when we, and it's for four years, is that correct? It's four year, the goals? Okay. So it looks like we made progress. Of the six goals, we made progress on five. The one that's lacking is stabilized city finances, which I'm a big, big proponent of. Trying to stabilize city finances and figure out, okay, how much money is coming in? How much money is going out? It seems fairly simple to me. If we don't have the money, we don't spend it. It seems like a lot of the expenses come from lack of maintenance, like windows here. I heard Laura Biggs say, well, they didn't caulk the windows. So now it's what, a $5 million problem to replace all the windows because the windows weren't caulked? Really? So $7 million on Fountain Square. What are we doing with Fountain Square? $8 million on lawsuits for James Park that all the attorneys said, just drop it. But it went for eight years and $8 million. This is, this is tragedy. I mean, the budget to me is number one priority. I, and I see listed here, top priorities, only four aldermen chose city finances as even a priority. And so how we went from 300 million for a budget to 400 million for a budget is beyond me. And like I said, so how much money is coming in? What, what is our projected income? I never talked to Luke about it, but probably I should have before this meeting.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, whatever. So we need to have the residents not only involved in the, you know, in the process, in the conversations, you need to figure out, one of the priorities should be to figure out how you can respond to residents' public comments. I've been saying it for four years.
Time.
I understand. Is we have a line waiting? Yeah, there's no line. So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Friedman.
What is the process for residents to get involved, okay? And for you to be able to respond to residents' public comments? The answers are in front of you. It's 78,000 residents here and probably half of those are taxpayers and voters.
Thank you very much.
So you need to get the input for all, for all of us.
Thank you very much.
The answers are here in front of you.
Thank you. We, we now move to those who signed up to give public comment online, beginning with Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Leslie Williams. Mr. Vasilko?
Thank you. I did join, got to a computer because I couldn't hear anything on my phone. So I sent a note last night. I'm just following up on that. I'm not going to repeat it. Climate action needs to be your number one goal this year. You, in my opinion, you failed to support climate action in the budget that you prepared for 2023. That doesn't mean you can't make some revisions to restore some of that money to the sustainability fund. I can't believe, I don't believe that anybody on the council is really anti-climate action. I do believe that some of you just don't understand the issue or the problem. Maybe you're not getting it, or maybe you're being told that what we're doing is enough. But it's not enough. We have a car plan, basically two parts, referred to as climate action and climate resiliency. Resiliency is putting the protections in for the disaster when it hits Evanston. And action is, is action, doing real things to cut gas off of anything that burns fossil fuel. So cars, equipment in your home, equipment in your businesses, equipment in city offices and buildings, just shut off the gas. That's, that's the issue. And that's action, and that's what I'm looking for. So the retort to this is usually, well, we're hiring two people for the sustainability office. That's great, but it's not, it has zero effect on climate action. Or that we're going to put solar panels on, on some of the city buildings. That's great, except we don't know, one, if that's going to happen, what is going to happen? And what exactly it's doing? Is it shutting off some gas-fired equipment? So that's a question. Or somebody will say, I'm sure, well, we're going to do this net zero animal shelter. It's overpriced, and we don't even know the real price yet. But does, again, does that mean there's no gas being supplied to that building? Do we know if that building is going to be built? Because you don't know the budget yet. We don't have a bid for it yet. So it's, my perspective has always been the action side, not so much the talking side and the resiliency, you know, caulking your windows and this and that, little things.
Fifteen seconds.
They're positive, but they're not enough in the big picture of things. We don't have, you know, the mudslides and the torrential rains and the tsunamis and burning forest fires in Evanston, but we spew as much pollution as anybody else. And that's the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Leslie Williams.
Good morning to Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, and City Council. I'm speaking as the president of the Community Alliance for Better Government, an organization with over 200 Evanston voters as members. And here are our concerns. We have six primary goals. Establish a plan to eliminate structural racism within the Evanston city government. Establish a plan to increase the number of city staff living in Evanston to 50% within 10 years. Improve transparency and communication with the public. Improve finances and economic development, accountability and transparency. Improve intergovernmental cooperation. And improve affordable living, affordable living, livable housing in Evanston. And some of the key objectives under eliminating racism would be to create an equity indicators dashboard for the city. Conduct a racial audit, a racial equity audit of the city using an outside organization with racial equity expertise. Fully implement the recommendations of the Black Employees Group and the Prescott Salvatory Report on the lifeguard scandal. Develop a plan to shift the budget to reduce spending on policing and increase spending on social services and mental health. And outsource human resources to a respected, independent firm to eliminate systemic inequities, nepotism, and inconsistent practices. We also suggest that in, in terms of improving transparency, that the city adapt the draft municipal public participation ordinance. Implement a report back and response mechanism for issues raised in public comment, as Mr. Vasilko mentioned. Reduce the number of closed executive sessions to only those required by law. Require all council members to hold regular ward meetings. And require departments to demonstrate a threshold of community participation and buy-in before launching major projects. And to implement a culture and an expectation of staff respect for and openness to the public. In terms of economic development, we recommend implementing tenure clawbacks and community benefits agreements as part of all major development contracts. Negotiating with Northwestern over property taxes on rental property and payments in lieu of taxes. Launching a public plan for spending ARPA funds and providing consistent accountability over public funds, especially any surplus funds and debt. We also recommend that the staff participate in the International City County Management Association, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and the Illinois Municipal League, and look to best practices recommendations in creating policies from these organizations. And in terms of housing, with the city revise and strengthen the inclusionary housing ordinance. Provide funding and staff resources for a newly strengthened fair housing ordinance. And fully fund an equitable and strong rental housing inspection program. And I will send our full list of goals and objectives to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the morning. We move now to call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Revelle.
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
Just eighth ward, ward meeting, the last Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
No report.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Harris?
Ward meeting Tuesday. Please sign up on Zoom. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
No office hours today for obvious reasons. We'll be meeting next Saturday, 10 to 12 at Capitol.
That concludes call of the wards. We now move to the main item for the day. Our, the second part of the City Council Goal Planning Session. I want to thank Dr. Jila Logan for continuing to help us through this process. Your leadership of our discussion last time was, I think, invaluable. And we're very much looking forward to active participation in part two. Thank you.
Good. I'm glad to hear you all. I'm looking forward to it. Excellent. I'm sure you speak for everyone, right?
Please don't accuse me of that.
So good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. I know it's been a while since we last met and a lot has happened. I feel from my own perspective and also feedback that I've received from various people that we had a productive session in December. And we came up with the 10 items that we are considering that everyone is passionate about towards being potentially the goals for 2023. However, we also all agree that 10 is too many. And what we want to do today is to narrow it down potentially to four to six approximately goals to really focus on for 2023. Since we last met, I've heard from several people that relationships on the council have been challenging and challenged. And that this past week, in particular Monday, was a very difficult time for a number of people. And I just wanted to recognize that and, because that's happened since we last met. And we just want to be honest with that. And at the same time, not allow that to hinder the work at hand today that is necessary for our city. What we are looking at is really getting alignment on what you're going to work on. And, and that alignment is really, that strategy itself is a tool. In a sense, it's a resource for, hopefully for you all to better be able to work together. It's not that you can't work together, but just to be, to improve the working relationships. You need a strategy. And this goals planning session is part of creating a strategy for you all to better work together. So this today is creating that tool so that you all can work in the best interest, not just of your wards, but of our city overall. So our plan is essentially to get these 10 points down, defined, narrowed down, and prioritized. And then to be handed over to staff. So today, we're not delving into the details of the benchmarks and the metrics. But we really want to be able to get it to a point where it can be handed over to staff so they can step into their skill level and their expertise and turn those into resolutions for your consideration. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know if anyone had any comments or questions about that before I moved on.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Logan. Let me just, two items. First of all, I want to add Councilmember Nguyen to the role. Welcome back, Councilmember. It's great to see you healthy. And Councilmember Reed has a question.
Yes. Coming into this, I was going to, I didn't have time this morning to write an email to suggest that we really try to narrow down to three goals, but I think maybe four is fine. But try to narrow in as tightly as possible. We've got two years left in our term. And I think just for us to really narrow in and focus on something, on, on a small set of goals will really help, I think, make some progress in those areas. So I think as small as we can get that list, the better. And I say that as the person who's made the most referrals and probably all over the place in some of this. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? And just to say, actually, that was the original number. It was three to six. So three to six, four to six, it's really what, it's not my determination, it's yours. And whatever you feel is most appropriate.
Councilmember?
Yeah. And we're going to get into the discussion, but I got an opportunity to watch Councilmember Nusma's ward meeting recently. And I thought there is a pretty good suggestion, a pretty good suggestion on how to look at narrowing our goals down specifically. You know, what are the things that are most measurable? And so I thought that that was a helpful way to narrow it down. And then also looking at, what are the items? Maybe equity. I don't think ARP is much, but certainly equity that should just overlay over everything, as someone said at your ward meeting. And, you know, should that really be a goal? It's hard to measure progress there. So I'll just leave us with that.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to kind of clarify the discussion.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The discussion at my ward meeting. Thank you for watching. The suggestion was perhaps to have some guiding principles separate from a delineated set of goals. So because guiding principles can inform many number of different activities, you know, across, across any number of different goals. And that's, you know, kind of in alignment with our, what's on the books currently. We have, we had five goals. We added a sixth one. We added ARP a year ago. But we also have a mission statement, a vision statement, and a list of four organizational values. So I'm not sure if we're going that far to revise all those or kind of starting over again. And we'll see where the process takes us, but I'm open to wherever we need to go.
Yeah. And I'm here to serve you all, so it's whatever you feel is best. My understanding, though, is today, we're not delving into that. Not that it's not important, obviously. But today was really focusing in on the defining of the goals, the narrowing, the prioritizing them and narrowing, narrowing them down. So are we all good with that? Okay. So before we jump in, one thing I do know is that we all live very busy lives. And I, I think I can assume that's, that's a safe assumption here. And I just want to ask before we step into it, if we can just take a pause just for a moment and just to breathe and just to be present. And I just want to, I know this may be unusual for a council meeting, but just to pause and to really try to align us in the present moment and the present work at hand. And to really center ourselves within ourselves, because that, I mean, that's where it all begins, right? That's where our best intentions are. Typically, that's where the issues originate. And I just want to take a moment just to talk us through some breathing. Because what happens is when, just as a human being, when we're tense, our bodies constrict. And the first thing that goes is our breathing. And we need oxygen to think clearly and to be present and to be well. So this may be a little bit unusual. I won't take it too far. But I'm just going to ask if you can engage me in this. And if you're not comfortable with it, that's totally fine. If we were on Zoom, I would say you can take yourself off camera. But here, you can't do that. So just briefly, I'm just going to ask if you can, first of all, just situate yourself physically comfortably, just to sit comfortably. You can take your shoes off. I don't know about your socks, but take your shoes off if you, if you so choose. And I would ask if you can, if it works, if you can put your feet flat on the ground. Because there's a psychological aspect to grounding ourselves. Am I, can you all hear me loud enough? Okay. To grounding ourselves by having our feet flat on the ground. And I would ask if you can sit at a, you know, with your back straight. And not only does it look good for the cameras, but it's really about aligning our spine and where the energy can flow to our brain. So if you can find that position and just put your hands however you find comfortable. If that's on your knees, folded in your lap, or on the, on your desk, whatever works for you. And I will invite you, again, it's optional, to close your eyes. And I'm just going to talk you through this real quick. And I'm going to participate from a standing posture as well. So if you can just, if we could just be still just for a moment and silent just for a moment. And I'm going to talk us through three breaths. And as I do, I'll ask you to inhale through your nostrils and exhale out of your mouth. So if everyone can take a deep breath in. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. And just allow your body to find its natural breathing rhythm. And just to bring your awareness to your own body. Your own mind, your own thoughts. How you're feeling. And I'll ask if you can, however you so choose, just to, I know we tend to carry a lot of tension in our neck and in our shoulders and our traps. But if you can just, if you feel so choose, just to loosen up your, your device that's on your shoulders, your head, just with some neck rotations, however you feel comfortable, if you so choose. Try to get the full range if you can. And make sure you go both directions. And I'll invite you back to the still position. Take a deep breath in. Exhale. And a couple of shoulder rotations, going back, send circles, however you feel comfortable with that. And a few forward. And back to the still position. Take a deep breath in through your nostrils. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale and hold it. Exhale. And just find your center for a moment. To really check in with yourself before we check in with one another. And as you're ready, I invite you to bring your awareness back to the group. Open your eyes. And step, take the next step into today's session. So in our session in December, thank you all for participating in that. In our session in December, I asked, as a introduction, as a reintroduction, I asked people to provide their name, your purpose for serving on the council, and a personal unknown. I'm going to spare you of the personal unknowns. For those who are here, I'm just going to, if you don't mind, I'll just repeat what you stated as your purpose for serving on the council. And I just want to start with that because that is important, that as we delve into difficult conversations, that we don't lose sight of the reason why you all are here to serve, that we don't get, that we don't get lost on that. And this is just in a random order. So Mayor Biss said that you're excited about Evanston being a model for innovative innovation and justice. Councilmember Kelly, she's hoping we can do a better job of representing the needs and interests of our Evanston residents, particularly our low and middlecome residents. Councilmember Burns stated that he wants to achieve transformational and observable change, specifically in the fifth ward. Councilmember Revelle wants to make a bigger impact on improving the sustainability of our whole community. Councilmember Harris, serving for the love, she said, to serve for the love of my community. Councilmember Nguyen, for the love of public service and solving problems for people. Councilmember Reed, to represent those who are at least proximate to power. Councilmember Hatakakis, to represent my community. And City Clerk Mendoza stated that she understands what it's like not to have representation. And City Manager Stowe stated that he wants to ensure that he's creating the best possible atmosphere and environment for our employees so that they can deliver quality services in an equitable fashion for the citizens of Evanston. And for those who were not here, I would offer you the opportunity to share in a sentence just what, what was your purpose for serving on the council? Councilmember Nusma?
I'll have to revert to the four E's that I campaigned on, in no particular order. Environmental sustainability, economic development, equity, and engagement.
Thank you. Anyone else want to revise their statement? So we're going to hold you accountable to it in a moment. Okay. But, but, you know, I mean, I know those are just words and those are statements, but they're important. And I take those as part of your commitment. And we cannot lose sight of that as we try to bring all this together for a focus and a strategy for the city council and for our community. And lastly, before we jump in, I would just ask if you can just share one word, how you're feeling coming into today's session. That could be, interpret that however you will. Just one word. And you can go random.
Eager.
Optimistic.
Hopeful.
And yes, we're all going to go.
Ready?
Optimistic.
Focused. I'll go with hopeful again.
Okay, thank you. And.
Hopeful.
Hopeful. And none of the others are online, correct? Okay. Did I miss anyone? Okay. So then we have a lot of goodness to work with. And that's where we're going, that's where we're going to start this discussion. So if I may, this was supposed to be our visual for our breathing exercise, but you can just imagine it, okay? So essentially, again, and, and we can revise this as needed. But basically, we want to define those drafted goals, develop a shortlist, three to six, and to prioritize them. If we can accomplish that, we've accomplished a lot. And in that, I do want to. And in, in that, I do wanna offer a friendly reminder that, um, for one, the, the funds are limited, so everything can't be done, right? Two, um, what may not fall into the top priorities does not mean that it's not important. And three, although this is, this may be a difficult process, difficult because in terms of coming to some focus, but it doesn't have to be contentious. And four, it doesn't have to take all day. It really doesn't. I mean, it does not have to. That's really contingent upon you all, my facilitation, but it's really contingent upon you all. So I'd like to just, um, remind us of our community agreements. And this is just the framework for engaging in these discussions. This is not a, a value defining process for the city council and for the city. This is not that. This is strictly to guide our conversation today so that we can have a, a space that works for everyone. You all can speak in your own authentic voice. Everyone can feel safe and we can be productive. And we can revise any of these, um, as needed. Otherwise, we're gonna hold you accountable to them. So one, just to participate and engage. And just the importance of when people state things, if you don't understand or you're not clear, just the importance of asking clarifying questions. And I know these really sound like common sense, but when things get tough, common sense is not always so common, right? So I just, as, these are just as a reminder. And just the importance of not making assumptions and to expect discomfort. That doesn't mean it has to be conflict, um, but discomfort because this is a, this is a very critical and important process that you're delving into. And that within itself can be a challenging creek, can be uncomfortable for people. And non closure, because this will not be perfect. And there's always gonna be more work to do and more definition to lend typically. To be aware, as I say, mic check, mic check, one, two, one, two, meaning so you come to the mic, and ch, mic check, one, two, one, two. I'm doing that so that I can speak. So I say that to say those of us who might, um, be used to sitting back more and listening and observing, the mic check is for you two to have your voice heard at the microphone as well. And mic check is also that once you say your mic check and say your piece, then you step off the stage. So for those who are more accustomed to, uh, speaking on the mic or having the mic in their hand, I ask that you, you know, say your piece, say what needs to be said, and we can move on so that all the voices can be heard. Then as I have here to, to engage and share humanity, community before council. Because we, again, and obviously you're the city council, but before that, you all are community members and you're representing our community. You are representing one Evanston, one Evanston. And even before that, we're all human beings. And hopefully, if we can come close to remembering that, that can, um, hopefully lend, um, a tone to our discussion in terms of speak, not only speaking from our own humanity, but relating to the humanity of one another as colleagues. And that's just really important because we are all on the same team here. To be trustworthy, so we, we all want to be trusted, but we have to be trustworthy first. Show that trust and, um, give that trust. And then hold yourselves accountable. Uh, it's, you know, too often in these types of discussions, people as human beings, not accusing you all as a council, but we listen. And when there's something we don't agree with, we're kinda just waiting to offer our rebuttal. And the, the listening goes out the window. I mean, that's just a, that's just human nature. And I just wanna challenge you to really stay focused on understanding what's being said. And if you don't understand what's being said, to ask the clarifying questions so that we can have the productive conversation and to not react. The difference between reacting versus responding, right? So reacting is that knee jerk reaction, that first emotion that we speak from as opposed to responding, where we, where there's some intentionality to that and there's a different thought process to that. A shared commitment to reaching consensus. I'll talk about that more in a moment because consensus is not agreement. Consensus is not agreement. It, it, that's two different things. We'll talk about that in a moment. And offer equitable respect. Usually people say to offer mutual respect. And with that, the saying is treat people how what? You want to be treated. But I would like to take that a step further and to say, to treat people how they want to be treated. Not just how you want to be treated or how you think they want to be treated, but to treat people how they want to be treated. That's the equitable aspect of that. The fourth one is to be forgiving and accepting of others, but also of yourself. You know, we might misspeak, we might say something in the wrong way. And let's, let's be forgive, let's offer some grace. Because again, we're all working towards a common goal here and, and let's not forget that. And in doing that, to assume the best and not the worst in one another. Because you, you all, as servants of our community, I assume you're all, are here with the right intentions and I, I see that you are. But we wanna be reminded of that. And to accept without defending and debating, that, that's a tough one. Accepting doesn't mean agreeing with. Accepting doesn't mean liking. But to be able to accept what someone says, accept who they are, accept how they say it. And we can, again, I'll a- ask clarifying questions and have discussion, but that does not have to be turned into a debate necessarily. The fifth one is to stay focused on the topic at hand. And that's not anyone's personal agenda. That's not just the specific agendas of the wards, but that's just the service of our community and really, um, identifying these goals and prioritizing them. And practice radical listening, as I often say, to not just listen from your ear, but listen from your heart and to really, again, with some compassion and some empathy and really seeking that level of understanding. And last, everyone has the right to be right. You have the right to be who you are and your authentic self. And, and there's no apologies that are needed. We shouldn't, um, you know, so hence there's no personal attacks at that level. It's the, everyone has the right to be vulnerable. We all have the right to make mistakes. And when we are showing our vulnerability, we're typically showing our humanity. And that should be respected and handled with care and not criticized and ridiculed. And we have the right to speak in draft mode because, um, none of us are perfect. And again, we might have to recant something that we said or how we said it. And let's allow the grace to be able to do that. So comments, questions, concerns, are you ready to sign this contract so we can move forward? Is everyone good with this? Anyone in opposition? Anything we need to add? Because, because part of, part of my job is facilitating but holding us accountable to this. So I just wanna make sure that we have some clarity on that. Okay, excellent. So then, what I would like to do, and, and this is, um, this process is fluid as well. We can modify it as we go, as we did last, in our last session. But the idea now is to really take that list. And everyone has a copy of the 10 items? Okay, great. So what we wanna do is to take those, and if you need a moment to take a look at them, please do so. So we have the 10 points, we have the sub points beneath them. And that's just fodder for thought, for consideration towards developing a definition towards those goals. So before we prioritize, let's make sure we define them to make sure we have a common understanding of what we're talking about. Too often, people use terminology. We, and that one word has different interpretations to different people. I can't remember in our last session or not if I used the example of love. I think we're all old enough where we've been in, in a relationship where you meet someone, you develop a relationship and, oh, I love you and I love you too. And we think we have a shared understanding and relationship only to find out that things don't necessarily go as we thought. Many times because we have a different definition of what love means. And how you wanna be loved may be different than how I think you wanna be loved and how I wanna be loved. So just the importance of defining these terms before we consider prioritizing them. So take a look at, and what I would like to do is to get us into three groups. Excuse me. And the time, I'll, I'll allow you all to determine how long you feel you need. But my thought on the first step is we'll get into three groups. We have our tables here. If you wanna spread out beyond that, that's totally fine. Um, or utilize the space as you need to. Take that list and be, and each group will take, of that 10, you're gonna take three to four of those items. And you're gonna come up with a one to three sentence definition. It does not have to be perfect. This is not perfection. This is the process. In this process, we wanna come up with the draft of a definition for each one of those items. Is everyone clear on that? Any questions on that portion of it? Okay. Do you need a moment to look those over or can we, are we good to go ahead? I mean, yes, you all do have a voice in this, so. You're good? Okay. So to prepare us for that, here is what, if you look on the slide, um, I mean, there's many different ways the groups can be formed. I, I think this covers everyone that's here. Right? Yeah. Okay, so these are our groups. That, that's not a priority list either. Yes.
And just for purposes of bookkeeping, uh, let's add Councilmember Burns to the roll.
Oh, okay. Okay. So if you all are good with it, we'll get into these three groups. But before we do, I would like to give us, um, a reminder and some context before we delve into that. So one, I would like to suggest the concept of SMART goals. And I, I know that's not rocket science. I'm assuming we're all familiar with that. And, and so I would just like to, just to abbreviate this, just to offer as a quick reminder because I've seen a variety of goals, I've seen past goals from the city and they weren't necessary. And not that it has to be a SMART goal, but I think this is a good framework. So that it is, whatever it is, is very specific, right? It's very specific, um, because goals can just be too broad and too all encompassing. And I, I think the key word there from my experience is the action, like the action word. That's really important. So SMART is measurable. Um, we're not delving into metrics today, but it should be measurable. I, I think Councilmember Reed mentioned like equity as an example, like how do you measure that? I mean, there are, there are metrics for that, but does that, uh, apply as far as a goal for the city? You know, that, that's the question I think that was on the table. However, you wanna be able to measure whatever that goal is. So specific is measurable and it's achievable. I mean, is it, is it even realistic, right? Is it even possible to, to accomplish? It's relevant. I mean, there's what you all do as a council, there's what staff does. There's what's specific to your wards. But there's what's priority for our city and for our community. And that's, that's the, that's what's relevant. We wanna stay focused on that. And how does that really improve our overall community? And lastly, that, there's some, some level is, and, and again, all of these may not apply to each one of those, but just in general, a general framework that is time bound, um, that is specific. It's not, there's, there's, there has to be some end goal to it at some point in terms of a timeframe. But again, this is just a general framework. It's, it's a recommendation. You don't have to adhere to this specifically, but I thought it would be helpful to kinda narrow it down if we focused on SMART goals. Okay, any questions or comments on that? Yes.
So these are goals for the four, the next, what, two years, four years, what? Um, because if I'm thinking about what we can achieve, some, one thing I have in mind is gonna take probably more than a year or so. I guess what timeframe are we talking about?
This is certainly not my decision to make, but my kind of practical instinct is very much similar to what Councilmember Reed said earlier. You know, here we are pretty close to the midpoint of our term. I, I think it, it probably makes sense to view these as goals from the period between when they're enacted and May of 2025. That would be my own suggestion. Please, if anyone disagrees, speak up.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was thinking.
So I'm sorry, I just wanna jot that down. You said from?
From now or when they're adopted until May of 2025.
Yeah, that's important to know. Thank you. Go back to the, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. And that other list is not a secret list. That's in case. I didn't know how many numbers we were gonna have here. So that was just another option. Okay, so everybody knows what group that they're in? Okay. And you, just so that you can see, it's not a, it's not a hit list or a secret list or anything like that. It was just another, another option. Any questions or, or comments on the SMART goals? Okay, then the last piece before we jump in, as a reminder, in terms of consensus. And this is important. I mean, again, it sounds just like common knowledge, but as I said, common knowledge is not always so common. It's not necessarily unanimous agreement. If we're seeking that, we may not get one goal as top priority. Um, so it, it is not that, it's not voting on competing options. So we're, we're not gonna be voting on it per se in that manner. And I'll talk about what it is in a moment. It's not debating. It's not about your specific ward, your specific principles, what's specific to you or what's the priority for you personally. The interest at hand is our entire community and our city. So it's not about debating our viewpoints. It's not about proving that we're right. It's not, um, it's not going with the lowest common denominator. I mean, that, that, that's the least value. That, that's not, we're not seeking the least. We're seeking for the most here. A silent, silence interpreted as consent. We don't wanna do that. So just because someone is silent on something, we do not wanna assume that's consent. We wanna hear from everyone because silence is not consent. It, it, it really is not. And it's not just going with the, the microphone mouth or who's speaking the loudest or speaking the most, the most intelligently or most passionately. And us getting on board with that, that's not consensus either. So without making it, this a, a classroom activity, just in general, what consensus is. So a group, the council, reaches consensus when all of you all agree upon a single alternative. And each of you all can honestly, honestly say, okay, first of all, I believe that you understand me. I believe that I understand you. Not, not agree, but the, the understanding is important. To therefore say, whether or not I prefer this decision, I support it. Whether or not I prefer, not your preference, but you can still support it, one, because it was reached fairly, it was reached openly, and it's the best solution for this community at this time, at this time, at this time, not forever, but at this time. And hence, as we can speak in draft mode, um, what we're gonna create is a draft as well. So I just wanted to put that out there for food, for thought. And here's a, and a couple of considerations when we think about what is consensus. So one, what are the blocks, you know, to consider that? So fundamental disagreements, that's obviously not consensus. Any stand decides, um, you know, I can support this goal because, but, so, you know, just go ahead and do it without me. I'm not gonna speak and, but that's not consensus. That really isn't. Um, well, you know what? I have reservations, but I, I guess, all right, I'll find, I'll, I'll let it pass. Like that, that's not consensus building. That, that speaks to, that's fodder for resentment and a whole lot more. So if, I just wanna highlight that. So we try not to fall into these traps. These are just traps of hu, of the human mind and of human nature, not of you all specifically. Um, any agreement? So I support the goal and I'm willing to implement it. That sounds like consensus and it's really, really close. But really here, I would say it's that all are in agreement and will support it. I will support it. Why? Because we feel it's in the best interest of our community at this time. Questions, comments, concerns before we break into our groups? Okay, then I will allow you all to get into your groups. And how, how long would you all feel we wanna go into? And, and we'll, we'll divvy them up in a moment, once you get into your groups. But how long would you all feel you would want for this portion of the exercise? I have my thoughts, but what do you all? So, so you're gonna, so each group's gonna have three to four of those 10 items and you're gonna come up with a one to three sentence per item. So you'll have three items of four and come up with the one to three sentence, uh, description, using that fodder that's on that page. I can assign them or you all can choose with, with, whatever your preference is. But in terms of a timeframe, would, how long would you all feel you might need? And it's flexible, it's malleable. Seven minutes? How about five? Now, how long, how long? Like, just, just as a start. I'll, I'll check in with you. So, so how about, so how about we do this? So I, I don't think we're gonna get there in 15 minutes, but I think that's a good check in point. So I'll check in with you all at 15. So I'll check in with you all at 15 minutes, and then we'll see where we go from there. So let's get into our groups, and then we'll divvy them up from there.
...
Well, I think it's really interesting. I mean, what can I say? It's like, then.
Yeah, maybe those four or five. And to me, it's just happened that, you know, before the pandemic has passed, it's been from my end up, it's kind of just been sort of very difficult. So I don't, I don't, maybe the pandemic is happening in the past, right? Or maybe it's also happened, we're sorry, they're great, it is. But it just feels like more, potentially more than second, I've got to like kind of go, maybe, maybe it's the same as before, but you're already. Just like, yeah. Something is like, you know, what is this thing? Have a baby that was, maybe that was, maybe that was. Maybe that is, maybe that is, maybe we're under. Honestly about. How do you accept their, you know, also the earth's, you know, and I think the plan is that this, you know, on the moment.
Okay, our time. If. If I can ask you all to pause, not end, just to pause your conversation for a moment. So, I'd like to know your thoughts. Um, what I, what I'm thinking is, we, and I, I just put the SMART goals up there just as a reference point, if you need to reference that at all. Um, but I think it would be good to take a break before we delve into the definitions of these. You know, my thought with that process is, each table first reads it out loud, allow people to chime in before it's written down. That, that does not mean it's written in stone, but before it's written down as opposed to trying to change it from that point. So, we would just have, you know, like group one read the first one, people chime in on any language, we can revise that, go through the second one, and then we can write them down. I, my question is, do, what's the, what, what repository do you have with data? Like, where, where do you collect all this data? Is there any way we can make it central and projected, or is that too much for the moment? Oh, that would, okay, great. Then, that, yeah, that'd make it a whole lot easier. Then that way, we can go through it and we can revise it in, in that moment. So, I think we do that, um, and get to the same page on a common page with the definitions before we prioritize them. And again, just to reiterate, just because one's not tied priority does not mean it's not important. So, shall we take a break now? We good for that? What, two minutes? No, ten minutes? That work? Oh, there we go, okay. All right, so I see you're ten minutes, so we'll call it, we'll, just about quarter, quarter after. And then if you could put the number and the topic. Okay. So, are, are you? Everyone have, if you can find at least one person per group who can access that. So, one per group. And, I'm sorry? Yes, everyone shared on this document, well, that's what I was told. So, if you all can take a moment and put your topic, and it would be great if you kept it in the order in which it is, but if you took your topic, typed in your draft definition, and then we can lightly discuss them from there. Okay, so take a few moments to do that, please. Yeah, if, if you can add your definitions to that document. And I would suggest, like, so if yours is number three, you put number three, use the same title, and then put in your definition, just for the sake of order. Is anyone typing? I don't see it on there, up there. I, I just didn't see anyone's, yeah, at the bottom. Oh, there we go, okay. And then if you could put the number and the topic. Okay. You're trying to keep the same number, maintain the same number. Okay, here we go. So, our groups have submitted their definitions on the same Google Doc. Council goes brainstorming, correct? So, I don't, I don't know who can scroll down on that to see. I can't, I don't know who's maneuvering that one. Oh, there we go, ah. Okay, wait, so we're missing. Yeah, well, so what, so, so what I was gonna ask is, if you take your definitions, so if you have, uh, housing, number one, just if you can cut and paste it next to the word, housing, colon, and then place your definition, so we can kind of consolidate it. So, housing, colon, and then your definition. Carp, colon. As, as I said, to put them at the bottom. You did, you did. You did. You get the A for that one, for sure. Okay. And as they're being placed there, I would ask for those who have access to it, if you can go ahead and start looking at what's there, so you don't have to see it on the screen for the first time. If you can look at that to familiarize yourself with it, that would be very informative. And does everyone have access to it on your devices? Is there anyone that does not? You, okay, so you can only see what's up there, then? And then let me know once you all have replaced your definitions. Well, I think all three, I think two of the groups are doing that. So, every group added their definitions, I think there's still two more who would, did you all put yours next to the term? Did you replace them? Okay, 'cause I, I can't see it, so I don't know what's, what's what. All right. So, we got the herd mentality. Okay, so then, and, um, I think so all, but two, who's accessing this to be able to scroll down? 'Cause not everyone has, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if you all can, or for the two of you all, if you can navigate the city manager, so you can see the definitions you're looking at. 'Cause, but I want is everyone to be able to look at them first, on your own terms, to read them, and then we'll have our discussion on them. And then once you've had a chance to review it, just let me know. Give me a sense. Hit now, thumbs up. Okay, so you two, you've had a chance to see them? Both of you? Right. Okay. And anyone else still looking at the definitions? Job well done, you all. We're making progress. Making progress, and the temperature is still nice and even, and this is all right. It's a good Saturday. So, what I, um, oh, so what I would like to do, then, if we can go to the top one, so this was Group B, our second group there, and, yes, and I think if we can not get caught up in too much of the nuance of the definition, and we want to make sure, like, just the essence, the essence is there. We can wordsmith it at any other point, we can pull out the thesaurus and all of that fine stuff. The basic essence, the integrity of the definition is, is the main point here. So if we can just go item by item, excuse me, and if there's any commentary on it, we'll offer that, and then we'll go on to the next one. Because then what we want to do is to get through the ten of those, and then, once we have a com- hopefully it's somewhat of a common understanding of what these terms mean, then we can begin to consider the prioritization of them. Okay? So, the first one, um, I mean, I can read them out loud, or you are, I mean, I think you can see them yourselves, how do you want to do it? We can take turns reading? Do they need to be read out loud? Or should they, for the record's sake, or? Okay, great. Yeah, so, and, oh, are you, okay, great. And as, I'm gonna ask each table if you all can read yours aloud, but please offer no explanation. None, zero, unless a question warrants it, okay? Strictly read the definition, or ask if there's any comments or questions. If so, we'll address it. If not, we'll move on to the next one. Consensus on that? Okay, so you all are, housing. Group B.
All right. Are there any questions?
Oh, go ahead and read it for the, and is that mic?
Expand the supply of safe and affordable-
I'm sorry, does that mic suffice?
I don't think so.
I'll, I'll give you this one, and I'll just, I'll use this one here.
Maybe I can just pull it a little closer to me.
Does that work?
Yeah, I, I think so. Mic check, one, two, one, two.
Yes.
There we go. All right. Expand the supply of safe and affordable housing in every neighborhood in Evanston. Increase the number of rental units restricted for households with incomes below eighty percent of the AMI. Build economically and racially integrated neighborhoods. Preserve and improve existing affordable housing. Expand resources for affordable housing and provide housing supports and services to most vulnerable individuals and families.
Okay, so I'm not the best math student, but from my count, that's a little, I think that's more than three sentences, although we could combine them, but it's fine for now. It's fine for now. Any clarification needed on strictly the definition? Any questions about any of the terms? No?
All right, we'll move on to number two, uh, which is equity. Develop a racial equity action plan to establish equity as a foundation of fairness and impartiality in all city operations. Complete an organizational assessment and implement training to operationalize equity. Did I miss anything, group?
Any clarif- any clarification needed? Any comments? Any questions? Okay, I have just one, if I may? That's up my wheelhouse there, equity. Um, and it's a question of what do you all mean, not what I think. I'm just posing the question of, oftentimes, I know a lot of organizations that I work with, they'll say equity, but they actually mean racial equity. Or they say racial equity, and they mean equity, because they're not synonymous, they're not the same. Equity is a much more broad, comprehensive term, whereas racial equity is specific to one element of equity. So I think, I would think that that just raised what to me seems to be, um, not in alignment, and I just wanted to get some, gain some clarity as to what you all mean by that. Does that, does that make sense, what I'm, okay?
Yeah, we talked about equity.
Here, you know what, I'll, oh, there we go. Okay.
I'm sorry, I just wasn't supposed to talk. We talked about equity across the board, that if we're equitable, it encompasses every aspect of the business of the city. So we would start there, knowing that we have places that we have to have a higher touch point, but if we come up with this plan, it's all encompassing.
Okay, question or comment?
There we go. Mic check, one, two. Uh, so I just want to clarify that we're, we're only talking about internal City of Evanston operational equity here, or, or not?
Oh. I think we were talking both internally and externally.
I'm sorry, city services as well as-
I, I, I think both are important, so I want to make sure we're not limiting the discussion to just the important internal issues, but they're community-wide.
So this is internal and external? Okay, is that, um-
Which is why we use all city operations.
Well, that's, that's internal. Like, that's City of Evanston operations.
As an outsider, reading it, that, that's the connotations it has to me, is that that's internal to the city only. Not that that's the truth, that's how I would interpret that.
Well, I see our oper- I mean, uh, yeah, if there's a word that folks have that maybe makes that clear, but I do see, you know, operations is external. What we operationalize impacts the, uh, the community and the residents.
I mean, it's not just the word, it's the, the first is understanding the concept. Are we talking just about city stuff, or are we talking about, for example, reparations, like, which is not just an internal thing with staff issues and HR, but finding ways to ensure funding for, uh, for reparations? Would that be considered under this definition as you understand it?
Yes.
It doesn't jump out at me. I'd like to hear that you intend it to.
So, so what I'm hearing is both internal and external-facing, essentially?
So, I mean, I guess we could, in all city operations, both internally and externally, we can add that.
I guess what I-
The delivery of city-
When I, when I read city operations, I think of stuff that Luke is in charge of.
Can you use the microphone? Are you all don't have one?
City op- city operations, services and programs. Does that cover everything?
And I guess, you know, maybe even more importantly, equity action plan, the way I read that, the equity action plan is kind of what we're already working on in response to the black employees. That's how I interpret that.
Well, it goes beyond that. I think that's certainly a huge part of it, but I think it goes-
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, unless we're gonna select ten goals ultimately, I think instead, because this is gonna take a really long time to do this exercise on all ten, I think we should just quickly go over the definitions, and then, if, again, if we're gonna only have three or four, spend what we're doing now on those three or four, because we're gonna run out of time, yeah.
Hey, the takeaway here is that we're not talking about just civic center stuff, we're talking about the broader community. Figure out the wording later, we understand the concept.
Yeah, I, I agree to your point. I, I was just seeking clarity on equity as opposed to racial equity, and if it's internal and/or external, but the nuances of that, I think, can be sorted out. But I think there's clarity on that, that we're talking about equity as a broad base, correct? And we're talking about both internal and external-facing?
Correct.
Okay, so now, I think we're good on that, then?
Yeah, we'll come, we're, we're open to wordsmithing.
Excellent. Then we're going to the third one?
Oh, my apologies. So our third is achieve our 2025 carp goals. We, we think there's a, or, I won't explain.
Questions or comments on that? Okay, number four, and that's Group A.
Yeah, this was economic development. Invest and bolster Evanston's unique identity and culture. Foster growth and stability for existing and new Evanston businesses. Ensure pathways to economic growth for residents.
We good with that? All right. Progress is made.
All right. Scrolling down to finance. Responsible and sustainable stewardship of city assets. Budget and asset management reflecting resident values and council goals.
We're good?
And the next one is-
All right.
-public safety. Ensure Evanston is safe and welcoming for all. Implement best practices in policing and develop coordinated alternative public safety responses.
Okay, I think we're good on that one? All right, next one.
Community. Create community awareness so that equitable public engagement can take place. Make tools available to all residents to initiate and share cultural and social activities.
Okay, we're good?
Number eight, public health. Commit to addressing and reducing health inequities and disparities by achieving significant and measurable progress toward addressing E-Plan priorities. Number nine, process and procedure. Utilize a transparent, efficient, predictable, inclusive, and equitable decision-making process across city government.
Okay. And last but not least?
Number ten, last but not yet determined to be least, we'll see. Uh, city infrastructure. Develop a long-funded, whoops, take two. Develop a long-term funded plan to assess, assess needs and maintain, improve, and/or divest of city infrastructure to ensure the highest and best use of city resources.
So we're, we're, okay, so we're, we're good with those draft, draft definitions? All right, excellent. Progress is made. Let's, let's recognize that as we go. So what I would think the next step, what I would suggest as the next step, is we kind of think about it in three buckets. One is, okay, are there just definite, obvious, top-tier priorities that we have consensus on? We put those in one bucket. Are there other ones that, like, you know, is there consensus on, it's important, but it's not top priority? That could be a second bucket, and then the third one evolves right there, the ones in the middle, which we may need further discussion on. I'm sorry, you had a question or comment or suggestion?
I have a question. You know, the exercise we just went through helped us understand, we have mutual understanding of these, and I think we agreed, we don't want to do a bunch of wordsmithing in advance. You made the arithmetic point, that I'm sure a lot of us noticed, that item number one had a bunch of stuff in it. Is, when we're going through the next stage, do you want us to go through that stage as though all of this is in number one, or are we kind of assuming in the back of our minds that there will be more pruning later?
In, in my thought, I think it's a both and, that we work with what's there, understanding all of these can be sifted through and, and pruned and refined thereafter. Not, not changed in essence, not changed in definition, but the amount, so number one obviously had a lot there. If we need to sift through that now, if you feel the need for that, we can, but my suggestion would be, if we're good with the essence of that, as a basic definition, we work with that, and then, understanding it's, it can be sifted through thereafter.
And, and if I could, uh, comment on the number one, the first sentence is new to what we came up with this morning, but the rest of that, those bullet items are from our twenty-
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen goal plan. So those are, those definitely, in my view, do need to be, those would be more in the vein of action steps, and, and they need to be revised. So I would say focus on the first sentence.
I'm glad you said that, Councilmember, because that's what I was gonna say, is that a lot of that just seems like the strategy behind the goal, you know, so I agree a hundred percent. I'm really looking at that first sentence.
Yes.
Since I'm, at some point, we're gonna have to get these down from ten to a more manageable number, I wonder if we might entertain the possibility of combining some of these goals where it might fit.
That's what I was gonna say, they open that.
For example, infrastructure and finance seem like they might naturally go together. Um, then there are other ways that we might be able to combine some of these other goals.
Any other suggestions? You said, infrastructure, finance?
Finance seem to go, seem to go together. Health, you know, might go into equity, since what we're saying under health really just says equity, so maybe those go together. Maybe, uh, you know, maybe we, if we expand the concept of equity, we can include the housing stuff, uh, under, under that category. Process and community, maybe they go together. There are other ways of slicing and dicing.
I think, yeah, public health and, um, public safety could go hand in hand. I don't know if equity can. I, I guess what I would caution is, to me, uh, and this is, goes to something you said earlier, that when, it doesn't, i- if something doesn't make the list of goals, it doesn't mean it's not important.
Right.
But certainly, in the way that I've, you know, worked in groups to create goals, it's like, this is just what we want to focus on, like, really put extra attention on. And for me, sometimes that means, because we're probably not putting enough tension on it now, and I, and I start talking about that, um, at our last meeting, there's some things that I think are really important, but that we're, we've already emphasized it and, and committed to working towards it. Finance is one of those, for me personally, I know it's not for everybody, but just the fact that we have a finance and budget committee, and on a regular monthly basis, we're having discussions about our finance, makes me feel like we've, we've done something there, like something meaningful, whereas with public health, you know, when I look at the E-Plan, not necessarily, right? Like, I don't, I don't see that same level of commitment and attention to addressing health inequities. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there. I think, for me, this is just like, what do we really want to focus on? And by grouping all these together and making, it, it, to me, it just, it's gonna, it's a lot of work, and I don't know if we can reasonably, you know, execute on that over the next two years or whatever we have.
Okay, um, Councilmember Reed, and then I'll, I'll comment on that.
Yeah, I-
Yeah, I, I, I think we should try to not combine as many of these. I think we should try to make each of these goals as succinct as possible, so it can really, we got, again, we got two years left. I think we, there's some consensus that these would be our goals for the remainder of this term. And I mean, all of these, I mean, I could make an argument why city infrastructure impacts public health and, you know, making a more walkable city or CARP or whatever. So yeah, I think we should just leave them somewhat where they are.
All right, go ahead.
Silence is consent, I have stated my case, and I think at least infrastructure could be combined with finance, but, you know.
So to that point, I was gonna ask, and if, of your recommendations, are there any, where there is, like for example, I think you said infrastructure and finance, is there consensus on any of those suggestions? And if there are not, then I would suggest we leave them independent and move forward? If there's an easy consensus, if everyone is in consensus that, you know what, infrastructure and finance, we can combine those, then we do that. If not, then we don't, and we move forward as is. That's my suggestion. Is there consensus on any of that? Yes?
The way I read the infrastructure sentences, like, we're saying the same thing in our finance goal, so maybe that's a first step, is we just intellectually understand that finance includes infrastructure and infrastructure doesn't make the cut in this, yeah, to the next round.
Hold on.
Okay, is there consensus on that point?
No, no. I, you know, I think, you know, all of these have, all of these need to be financed, affordable housing, all of it needs funding to come from somewhere. And quite a bit of funding if we want to make measurable progress toward these goals. City infrastructure is one of the largest unfunded mandates that we have, or liabilities that we have. But I do want to keep them separate, and as we get into it, I certainly want to make a case for infrastructure being one of our goals.
We did explicitly discuss, when discussing the topic of finance, that we have more assets than just money, which include our infrastructure assets. So we were trying to broadly interpret our financial goal here, to be able to include buildings and other infrastructure. So I'll let the conversation continue.
Okay, so what I would suggest is we go forward as is, considering that that can still be a possibility. Not that it's not a worthy consideration, but at this point, for the sake of prioritizing, we keep it as is. Are we, does that work? Does that work? Okay. Excuse me. So with that, I go back to my other question. What do you think about the three buckets idea? Like are there just obvious ones that are top priorities, consensus on, or ones that like, you know what, not that they're not important, but there's consensus that they're not top priority, and then the third bucket kind of evolves on its own?
Yeah, I think there might be consensus here that housing, affordable housing, maybe not exactly that definition, but that housing is a top priority for, I think, just about everybody. I'm seeing a wince, but.
I put housing inequity in my mind.
Can you live with it? Can you, Eric?
Affordable, can you hear me? Affordability, I think, is part of that. You know, in the housing issue, in terms of people not being able to afford to live here, whether it's low income or middle income. So I see that as sort of an overarching, both with equity and housing.
Well, I think.
And if I could, if I could just add briefly, there's not necessarily a clear defining line between any one of these. There's obviously overlap, right? And what we don't want to do is to get into redefining them right now, as opposed to working with, we developed consensus on with what we have. And, I mean, if you're not on with the idea, just let me know that, but I just think a good starting point are the obvious ones on either end, and then we can delve into the discussion towards those in the middle. You had a comment?
I was gonna say, for me, I would, I would take out equity before I took out affordable housing, because again, I really think equity is, you can make a case for why that, it could be included in everything that we do in the city. Whereas again, affordable housing, we really need to focus in on what the definition says, at least in draft mode, which is, you know, increase the supply. And that does need a, you know, we can't just let equity necessarily carry us all the way there. We need to know that that's a commitment and that we're gonna prioritize some time, yes, money, and everything else to figuring out how to do that. So I do think affordable housing, hopefully, I know that was a goal for the previous administration, I think. Hopefully, there's some support. I think there's some support to move that over.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, so if we can do the buckets on, if we can visualize this, if we can, where's the first one? Please. Okay, so I think if we can go item by item, just to see if there's consensus as these being either top priority or not.
And if I could.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Make an additional comment about the affordable housing. The, there's some key, it's not just the supply in general, is that? But it's also that we increase the supply in all parts of Evanston, and the key to that is going to be the revision to our zoning code, which is something that with serious work on our part, we can bring the community together to agree with it's gonna be. And that's something that I think is, the timeline for that is within the next two years. So I really, I agree with Councilmember Burns, we need, this really should be a top priority.
So is there consensus that this is a, when in consideration for top priority, housing?
I guess it just depends on how you, how you want to poll us. Like how are we gonna determine consensus? I think we need to understand that, just so we're more efficient. When we're up there, we know how we do it, we call roll call. But how are we gonna do it in this space? I think it's important to establish that.
Yeah, yes.
I would suggest ranked choice voting. We could do, we could rank our, rank our first, first four or five, and then that should sort out our priorities. And then maybe if we have five, do we want to stick at five or three, four, go from there?
We could do that, because from what I saw on the notes from our previous session, that seemed to work pretty well, where I think everyone had five choices and you ranked them. Is that what I saw up there? Am I translating that right?
I mean, I would recommend that we do what you said, and see if we have consensus on a few items. And you can, perhaps you can just literally ask the room, for example, I think there's sort of an unresolved question about whether there's consensus on housing. I think you could ask the room. Does anyone want to raise an objection to definitively putting this on our shortlist? And, you know, we'll have to count on folks to be courageous enough to speak up if they're the only one. I do think it's healthy for us to start out by seeing if there's consensus on one or a couple of these.
Okay, let's do, yes. Well, I mean, you all can speak for yourself, but just from what I can see, I mean, 10 is just too much as a focus. Again, we're just talking about a focus, talking about as a starting point, from my understanding. A focus and a starting point, and you just can't start with everything all at the same time, you can't focus on it all.
And so I think.
But is it productive? I don't know.
One way to look at it, and I'm not knocking this issue, because I think it's important in its own right, but I've always used this. It's hard, the amount of time and effort and meetings that we've dedicated towards Harley Clark is not the same that we've dedicated towards other really important issues. And so to me, that's how I look at the goals, is that all of it is important towards running the city, but what are we gonna spend that level, Harley Clark level of time, effort, money, et cetera, trying to figure out over the next year or two? And I think that same level of commitment, in my opinion, we need to dedicate towards public health and affordable housing. So that's where I would end up. We have not met as much on those issues as we have just on Harley Clark, in my opinion. I was there from the start when we were, when the committee was formed. And I'm not saying that's not an important issue, but we only have so much time, so much staff time, so much time, you know, for us. What, that too, I mean, yeah. No, 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 that's, no, no. But that's the point, but the point of this exercise is to know what we're gonna park, right? And say, you know what, we're gonna sideline this. Doesn't mean we won't discuss it, but we're gonna put it on a slower track so that we can focus more of staff time, our time, resources, et cetera, on these things over the next year or two. And then we can revisit, you know, and check in at different points to see if we want to, you know, make any adjustments.
So let me suggest, we go through these items, see if there's obvious consensus on any, and if there's not, we can, we can park and lot those for further discussion. So it sounds like housing is not consensus on that as a top priority, is that correct? Does anyone object to housing being a top priority? Okay, I, so that's an objection, from my understanding, so you object. So, I'm sorry? So number two, let's just try this, we can always, we can always, it's a both and, we can do that as well. Number two, equity. Is there consensus that that's a top priority? In the top four to six? Any objections?
I would say, I object to that, it is one of my biggest priorities, but I don't know if it needs to be one of our goals, because I think it overlays over everything. It's a foundation of operations.
That's how I feel as well. And also, without knowing how many we're gonna end up with, it's hard to do this, that's why I think.
So, but we're gonna narrow it down, so we, so what we don't want to do is to delve into the discussion on it at this point? And either we have consensus or we don't?
If we don't agree on housing and equity, we're not agreeing on anything with consensus. So we can go through this, but we'll end up with nothing.
So let's keep going through it. So from my understanding, then we don't have consensus on, what's housing? There's not consensus on equity, for whatever reason. Am I hearing that correct? Okay, number three, CARP. Any objections to CARP being a top priority?
I think I'm gonna help us out, I don't, I don't have consensus, the way we're doing this, I would not have consensus at this point around anything. I just want to remove myself from what we're doing right now to help us get through this.
Then we can't, we can't develop consensus?
You can talk, I'm just, I'm not ready to throw my hat in on anything just yet.
But I don't think we're throwing our hat in on it, we're just identifying top priorities or not, and which ones are for further discussion. Yes?
So I come from a background in the League of Women Voters where we operate by consensus, especially on public policy issues. And consensus is not unanimity, it is a general sense of the group. And so there can be one or two people who disagree, but we would still say the group as a whole has reached consensus in particular issues. So I'm concerned that we're gonna, we're looking for unanimity and we'll be in big trouble.
Yes, and we're not, and we shouldn't be looking for that. Yes.
If, I think it would help me personally to see if folks could make a mark as to what they think should be our priorities. Some people might have three, some people might have five. I think that would get us to a point where we kind of know where we have a general consensus. Like if we have seven marks, six marks on one of the topics, I think that would get us very close.
Okay, Councilmember Harris, you got it?
I was just gonna say, if we went through and everybody picked their top five, then we can see where consensus lies instead of trying to lobby that right now. Because that's what everybody's trying to lobby right now. If everybody just gives their top five and we move forward, we can see we may be closer than we really think we are.
Okay, so if I'm reading the room correctly, and tell me if I'm wrong, but because I'm hearing that if this one's not on there, then the other one's not gonna be on there, then from that standpoint, none of them are gonna be on there. That's what I'm hearing. Okay, so then that process is out the window, because that's not gonna work. Right, so then secondly, I would suggest we do what I think I saw from our first session, where we have the list, if we're having, where we can choose the number five, you can have your top five priorities. We mark those and we can visually see the priorities, and we can see if there's consensus or not. Does that work for most people here? Five or fewer? No, it doesn't have to be five. But is that number, five suffice? No, what does? Well, we have 10, so we're narrowing it down, though, we have 10. So we got 10, but now we're narrowing it down to five. Okay, so let's do that for our top five. No, no, not ranking. No ranking, just what the five are. Does that work for you all? We're gonna, so we have the 10 goals already, you're gonna have up to five choices. We're not ranking them, just identifying which ones you see you as priorities. Let's just take that next step. If you need a moment to think about it, go ahead and think about it. If you're ready to put your tally, go ahead and put your tally. Just the tally. Okay, I believe that's, I was just doing the math, I, I think that's all of them. Okay. Let me grab my sheet here. Okay. So. Is, so if I may, just to keep the process, uh, moving forward. So, so two things, um, before we get to that, that I'm kinda... I'm sorry? Okay. So I know, uh, finance and equity have come up in terms of like, how much those merge with others, or are integrated into all aspects. Okay. And I, and so, so two things real quick, so one, in terms of finance, obviously, you know, I mean, everything has to be financed. That doesn't, so, that doesn't mean that's financed per se. So I think there, it sounds like there's clarity that's gonna be, need to be gained on that differentiation. Two, in terms of equity, I'm hearing different aspects of equity that are not on the definition. And... There's equity as a process, there's equity as an outcome, there's equity as a goal, there's equity as a value. So, I know the city has city values on the values statement, and is, is equity a, should, should that be a, and again, when I'm not, this is not for debate now. Just throwing this out there in terms of if that's of, um, if equity is a value for the city, if not, should it be? And equity, I'm assuming, is woven in to all of these aspects where appropriate and where needed. That, that's my assumption. So if, if that's the case, just consider that when we talk about equity. Cause I, I was, I think I was hearing, if equity's not in there, nothing else is gonna be in there, if I'm understanding that, if I, if I heard you all right. But just to con, just to consider that. Any quick comments on that before we go back to this? No?
Not on.
Okay. So we have...
Yes, 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 so I do, I don't know if that could be the overarching, everything falls into an equity state of being. That, that's my thought, that everything, all ten of these have to, well, nine, if you take equity out, have to be dealt with a equity lens, so yes.
Cause.
My thought is, uh, I mean, going to Councilmember Hedicottis' point about ranked choice voting, I wonder if we should just start with the items that have zero votes, one vote, whatever, and start eliminating things and moving up from there. And maybe, you know, if you're the one vote for nine, you can reassign until we get to just five goals that are, that there's some real consensus on. And then see if we wanna winnow it down from five to three, which I would suggest.
Yes, however, I, I just wanted to say, in, in terms of the equity, cause that, that's a sticking point. And I just wanted to put that out there because again, from my perspective, equity, it's, it's a process, it's a goal, it's an outcome, and it's a value. It should be woven and integrated into every aspect of everything, as opposed to, I mean, I just don't know how you detach equity from everything. I, I just, I, I don't, it's not possible. So I just wanted to put that out there in terms of equity. Having said that, um, so we have the ten categories, and there's one that did, again, not that it's not important, but there's one that did not get a tally, there's two that got two tallies. My question is, do we wanna consider those as for the, in a sense, the parking lot items? In terms of goals that are not the priority to begin with for the city council? Not that they're not important, not that you wouldn't get to them at some point, not that they're not necessary, cause they are. But do, is there consensus on that?
Yeah.
Of, of the... Of, of, of the priorities, yes, not, not, yes, off the priorities, off of the priority.
Yeah, my, my, my thing is, maybe we just go through, eliminate each of these, and then folks can reassign so we can see where there's more and more consensus as your item falls off.
Does, does, does that work, cause you all should know your tally, right, so, so let's, so go ahead, let's go ahead and cross seven off. Okay, so nine and ten, there's one.
I was wanting for ten for infrastructure.
So those two should be reallocated. Yes.
Who's nine? Process and procedure?
Is it blue?
Yes. Was there something, something else that, uh?
I, I as well as the equity think our process and procedure needs to be in all of that. We, we don't necessarily, we need to operate like that, it isn't how we operate, always, but that's how we should operate. So again, if we can agree for our equity, that that's the overarching, we're going to have process and procedures, um, that are transparent and all of that, then I, I will acquiesce my.
Yeah, I was trying to think of what this... Yeah, you can, yeah, go ahead and process it. So we have, um, well, let's circle that one so we know, don't, don't, or at least the circle, yeah, just so we know. So nine and ten? But, but I think we shouldn't go forward until those two are reallocated, because then it's, this proportion is... Oh, okay. So. Okay. So, but before we, but, but before, before we proceed, let's just recognize though, already we got it down to seven. Okay, let, let's just recognize that. So we, we got it down to seven. Okay, let's not overlook that. We said, um, you know, three to six, six is a lot, but that, well, we're looking at something within that range. So as we move forward, just consider where we're at, so now, uh, two is the next, two is what, oh, equity. So that goes back to that, to the point, of that being integrated. So there's consensus on that, from what I, what I'm seeing and understanding, that's a priority, it's a goal, it's a value, it's integrated throughout every aspect of what you do, how you do it, what you're trying to, the outcomes are. Yes?
But I, I think though, that yes, we, we all are agreeing that it, it permeates everything we do. But I think this is also a statement of our values to the, to the world. And so, where, where do we talk about equity then, in, in our values? Cause I think, cause I think we, we should, we absolutely should talk about it.
I, I totally agree about it being integrated in everything, but I also think that if we're looking at things or we should spend extra time and, and effort on. I feel like there are things that we have to address in that, from that bucket, and so that's why, even though I agree it should be in everything, I, that's why I put it as one of the stated goals is. It is something that in the next two years, we really have to do some extra work to catch up, to resolve some things, so.
Knowing what those things are is important, because to me, the things that we need to, to do to address equity fall under public health, fall under housing, fall under these other things. So if, but if there's something the city needs to do from an infrastructure standpoint, that's vastly different than what we're currently doing, then that's one thing. But I would need to know that, cause we have the Equity and Powerway Committee, we have this position in our budget, what, what else does the city need to do that could create, that could, that would require a lot of resources or time or effort?
There you go. Can you put that on the microphone?
Clarifying question, you said infrastructure, I hear that, I think roads and sewers and water.
I don't know if I meant to say infrastructure if I said infrastructure.
City operations.
Yeah, probably, I don't, I don't remember saying infrastructure, but yeah, if I did, I didn't mean to say that. Uh, but yeah, basically what I'm saying is, yeah, what, what other, um, no, no, not, okay, I know why I brought up infrastructure. Infrastructure, and like, to me, I look at boards, committees, and commissions as part of, right, our infrastructure.
City operations.
Organizing the city, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Got it.
Um, thank you for that. So that's what I mean, if there's some other big thing that we need to do to work towards it, then I would agree, but I'm not, I'm not sure there is. I think the big stuff is like just, you know, dedicating the money towards, again, public health, uh, where we know we have a lot of health inequities, uh, you know, housing, and probably some of, some of this other stuff as well. But, yeah, so that's, that's why I would be comfortable with it being a value and not necessarily a goal, something that we, make sure that we, you know, apply towards everything we do.
And, and my question is, since equities are both and, right, is there something, to, just to your point, is there something specific to equity? I think I saw, um, what was it, equity audit or, what did I see in the?
Yeah.
Am I making that up? Okay, so is that, for example, I'm just saying, for example, if, if we took equity off of here, and it was only a, a value, does, does that, does something here cover that equity, um, audit that needs to happen? For example?
The audit is part of, would probably be a part of the Equity and Powerment slash the new position we're bringing in, that would be a part of their work, whether it made it as a goal or not. I think that they're already on track to doing that, I know they've done, the Equity and Powerment Commission has already done, put out some surveys, and I think they're gonna, they're already, you know, on that, on that course.
Okay, so that would still be covered then?
Absolutely, I think so, yeah.
So are there any elements that would not be covered if that was removed? Yes?
I, I wanna say that, you know, I, I think, one, I, I mean, it's got four votes, I think, if we just continue with the process that we're doing, folks just have to accept that this did not get enough votes, and either just reassign their votes.
Yeah, yeah, however, I mean, I, I think we're at a defining point here, because I was just kinda sifting it down. So, if, if I'm hearing you all correctly, if we took equity off of here, anything that currently falls under equity would still be covered because of its integration into all operations and, and into the values. Is that correct, from my understanding, cause I don't have the knowledge you all do?
It would, but I think we would maybe all like to have that on the, on the goal list, to remind us that it's a value. So I'm gonna make one more pitch for my original interpretation of equity, which in my mind included housing and public health. And if we collapse those into one goal and worded something like ensure equity in all city operations and policy proposals. I was attempting an umbrella, kinda high level, that would include public health, include HIR policies and practices, include, uh, policy decisions like, uh, affordable housing, affordable housing plan in one umbrella. Maybe that's too big, but I'll, I'll.
I think it's too big, personally, I think it's, yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll just, well, I was just gonna note, with the ranked choice process, eliminates the primary and the discussion, the additional time. I, I wonder if our time is, give, again, given that it has only four votes, if the lobbying efforts for those items should change, we should just continue down this process? Utilizing the principles of ranked choice voting, which eliminates a primary and the opportunity for that additional discussion.
Okay, that's understood, that's understood.
And I, I agree, if we're gonna stick to the process, it didn't make it, but I think it would be an atrocity if we walked away from these tables and did not deal with the equity issue that we have in front of us. That our staff members, our community members, us personally have dealt with, that would be an atrocity to leave this table and not, um, recognize. Um, the concession I feel like I could make is if every single one of these goals has equity in its, in its, um, definition, that we make that primary in the definitions, then I feel better about it. I feel like it should be in our mission vision and organizational, and that it is the leading principle, so it needs to be one of the first things we stayed in there.
And, and I, I concur with your point, and Councilmember Reed, um, to, to your point as well, because if it's integrated in every aspect, so, so, again, the audit, or response to the black employee letter, or whatever that is. If that's woven throughout, then, uh, cause I just wanna make sure that that doesn't get lost if we take that off the list, that's all I'm trying to, cause, so admittedly, I'm contradicting my own process, cause we're, we're discussing, so I'm admitting that. I, I admit that, but because of the, the, the importance of that, and that, that's my bias, but that, because of the importance of that, I think we're, we're at a deciding point here. Cause it sounds like, cause equity should be in the mission, the vision, the strategic plan, the values, the goals, in every, it, it should be woven into the, to the metrics and to the definitions of all, I mean, it should be woven into the fabric of the organization. And I'm just asking, if that's the case, then equity should, it sounds like it could be taken off of this list. But we don't wanna lose the integrity of what needs to be done. So I was just asking, is that, are those elements covered, because you all have the knowledge that I do not.
So, when we started off the, the discussion earlier, we said we wanted to get to three to six goals, and the reason to narrow down the goal, like, obviously we wanna do all these things, but also keep our focus and not be completely scattershot. I think if we said right here, these are our six goals, we're not really, cause the reason to narrow this down is to, is so that we have the bandwidth and time to do these things. Rather than scratch equity off the, the top list, we can keep it on because we know we're integrating that, and we know that that's something that we're going to be giving resources towards and working towards. And I think, even though I would personally, you know, if you'd have told me at the beginning, let's get less, I would say like, let's get less than six goals, I'd be fine saying, these are our top six goals, and go from there. And I don't know if there's consensus to that, but.
Because that would bring us to six, and that, that's one of the reasons why I'm just trying to nuance this a little bit, again, contradicting myself, but, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm picturing the, the big poster that's gonna be all over the Civic Center that lists our goals, and what we don't wanna have is a poster that doesn't have the word equity on it. So I'm wondering if there's a way to have like, I'm, I'm gonna call it a preamble, but it's not, that's not the right word, but anyway, something at the top that says something about equity, and then we have our goals. So it's understood that the goals are, that equity encompasses our work on these goals.
Yes, and I mean, my understanding is that's where your value statement comes in, cause that, that's the overarching umbrella and the, and the, the floor as well. So if, to, to your point, if that's in there, then it's covered, because that's a good point you raised, and then it's covered.
And also to Councilmember Harris's point, I think, uh, uh, process with regard to transparency, that also, I mean, ensures, you know, bolsters equity. So I feel like that should also be in the overarching, um, preamble, thanks.
Okay.
So, cause I, I don't want people to think that we're not prioritizing it, if anything, if you look at the hierarchy on the city's website, how it puts community at the top, like, if equity is at the top, it's more important than the goals. Goals can change, but putting it at the top is... By putting it at the top, it's, we're indicating the same thing we're indicating by putting the community there, that this is the number one priority, right, that won't change. It's mandatory that we focus on equity. So I don't, because I think people are trying to use the goals as this, you know, to indicate to the community that we care about this and I understand that. I think by putting it at the top, in the same way we put the community at the top of that one landing page, if we could pull that up, is the same way I see the Councilman Revel's point we would do for equity on all the posters, that that's at the very top, right? Along with maybe, you know, uh, community engagement as well, because I think that is also important. I mean, it's part of equity. That's probably part of equity. So equity probably in some sense can cover that. But that's the top thing and then everything flows from there.
So, so what I'm hearing then, because a- as important as all that is, it has to be woven into the accountability, right? And if, as long as that's there, from what I'm hearing, we can take equity off of this list. We got, we got six priorities and we, we, and we just, just took that next step.
But to your point, accountability has to be here for everything. Let's just be clear. Because all we're doing today is putting words on paper. So whether we, we put equity at the top or wherever, like, for all of this, we still have to operationalize it and make, and hold ourselves accountable to it. So, yeah.
True.
I, I would encourage us to hone in even further. And, you know, it's, I think what folks are concerned about is, uh.
I think the, I think the hierarchy thing just makes, if you pull it up on there, equity and then everything else is under it.
Yeah, that's not what I was talking about.
I, I believe, I believe we did too, but let.
Yeah, that's not where I was going. Okay, where I was going is I think we need to hone in even further, not just settle with six or, or five. I think we need to hone in, I really would suggest three or four. I'd really go for three. And, yeah.
And I, I concur that we need to focus in on, but we got to take the steps to get there. So, so then from what I'm understanding, we can take equity off of this list and we're down to six as a next step.
We're elevating it. Because I know people are concerned, we're elevating it.
We're elevating it, institutionalizing it, rooting it, grounding it, systematizing it, codifying it. Yes, all of the above.
I'm comfortable with the six.
So, so. Wait, so let's, let's do that and then let's have our lunch, okay? Yeah, yeah, lunch is, yeah, we can, but we still need to like do the process of getting our lunch. So let's reallocate those four votes.
And if you already voted for something and your, and your, and your choice isn't there anymore, just like ranked choice, you just are out of a vote. Yeah, if you. You all get one vote per item.
So I can, this leaves me in a position of voting for something twice.
You can't do that. That means.
But we appreciate the integrity and the honesty.
You lose your voice.
No, didn't lose your voice?
Because somebody else is going to agree with something that I already agree with, so that's fine with me.
Yes, please, please. His, his, his five are covered. Yeah, his. Okay, then there's just one more.
Okay, I'm, I'm losing the vote because I don't know.
Okay, so are we good with this? Okay, let's, let's take a, let's take a break. Now, we can have a working lunch, but let's take a break, get your water, bathroom break, lunch. And I know some people have a hard stop at 1:30, so we want to honor that for those who do. So, yes, thank you. Let's tally those. Go ahead, have your break. And can we resume back in, what works for you all, 10 minutes? All right, 10 minutes. So we'll say quarter to. So we just came to consensus that as far as the priorities, that's the first one, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth. Now we can all go home. We're done. No, I'm just, just kidding. So, yeah, by all means, keep eating as you're doing. I know people have a hard stop at 1:30, so we'll, we'll honor that. So we have, okay, so we have it narrowed down to six, right? There's the point, uh, because six is a lot, but six is within the range. Given these six, is there, I mean, we, we see the tally as well. I mean, does the tally speak to you all in any way or do we want to? Are you going to finish my sentence for me? Go ahead. Can you, can you grab the mic, please?
Yeah, um, the, the, I, I wonder about the tally. I don't know if economic development is everybody, is our, really our top goal. But I, I, I would like, again, to press us to try to narrow to four. And, and again, again, all of this stuff is important.
Right.
And, you know, I'm, I'm still going to be pushing for things that have to do with infrastructure, even though it's not on our list. And I expect, uh, you know, for important things to, those to still move through. But I think honing in and really saying, we got two years to focus on something and make some deliverable progress on, on those few issues, what are those things?
So let me ask, just as, as a starting point for discussion, and not that the tally is the definitive answer, but considering we have five for public health, six for public safety, now I understand there's some overlap there. Do we want to consider in terms of priorities and taking some off of the list or reprioritizing, looking at those two for consideration?
So what I was going to say is I, I would look at, um, if we were going to consolidate, consolidating those two, two. And the only reason I feel like this is a natural fit is because that is where a lot of, I mean, we, we have the Reimagine the Public Safety Committee. We've talked a lot about in the working group, our chair and other working groups, just there is a real connection. It should be even more of a connection between how we look at advancing our public safety goals and, and how we look at advancing public health. They're, they're really inextricably related in, in many ways. And so I think there is a natural kind of true fit, even if you look at just best practice and what the thought leaders of, of this space are thinking about. So much so that there are some, you know, cities that have public health directors over the police department. You know, that's how linked they are in some places. And so my overall concern is that I would not want to, I, I really don't know what else we can do in terms of effort on finance. I know we have to have it in here because, you know, our core responsibility as a legislative fiduciary one, but I certainly wouldn't want to drop it off for public health because we have a financing budget committee, similarly to what I, the conversation I have with Councilmember Head of Congress about, like, what else can we do with equity? The same thing with finance, like, what other effort or amount of money are we going to, what are we going to put it towards that would change the way we finance? But in my opinion, I think we definitely need to do a lot with public health. We have a very sobering E Plan that we need to reckon with. And I just, I would feel very uncomfortable dropping that, really any of these off, but definitely public health.
What was the last part you said, other than?
I would feel really uncomfortable at, like, dropping really any of these off at this point. I think they are really important, but I would, I think consolidating public health and public safety could potentially work. If you want to drop it to five.
Yes.
And, and that was exactly what I was, um, thinking. So I, I think that makes, um, that makes a really good, um, combined goal.
I'm com- there you go. I'm comfortable leaving it at six. If we need, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to diminish public safety, but wouldn't be opposed to combining public health and safety into one.
Can I ask for consideration for that point? If we can look at the definition of those two just real quick? For public health and public safety. So.
So public, oh, sorry.
So public safety ensure Evanston is safe and welcoming for all, implement best practices in policing and develop coordinated alternative public safety responses. That's public safety. Okay, then public health. Commit to addressing and reducing health inequities and disparities by achieving significant and measurable progress towards addressing E Plan priorities. So as defined, Curie says to your thoughts, as defined.
I mean, I would say keep it at six with those definitions. Because there is, there is a lot of different work involved in each, especially because.
There is.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm, I'm fine with six. I mean, I'll just keep agreeing.
And that's the importance of the definition, yes.
I also like keeping all six.
A- a- any disagreement with that, keeping it at six for now, again? Silence is not, yeah. Any, any disagreements? Yes, Mayor Biss.
I mean, I guess just in full, full sort of, of capitulation mode, I'll say I'm comfortable in the name of consensus, accepting a point of view that would not be my first choice. But my, my initial instinct is quite similar to Councilmember Reed's. I think that, um, we have suffered in general during the course of these last nearly two years from a lack of focus. And I think if we, given that, if I were to make a recommendation for, for this process, it would be that we err in the opposite direction. I, I don't think we're going to look back on this eight months from now and say, oof, we really, we didn't give ourselves enough to do. But I think we're at risk of looking back and saying we didn't narrow our focus enough. And so, again, my, my own preference would be to, as painful as it is for me too at this stage, continue narrowing.
Continue narrowing it down?
That would be my own preference.
I think one way to, another way to look at this is, you know, because we're doing a, a work plan as part of the NWEV Committee is, is you don't really understand the amount of work and effort that's involved until you get a level deeper than this. And so I think for the time being, there's a chance we could keep it at six to now, start to understand, like, out of these goals, what do we really want to achieve in each area? We'll get a better sense of the amount of effort and resources needed. And if we need to cut back at that point, we'll, we'll still have an option. But this, this doesn't tell us much about effort. It tells us much about, and so we're kind of making assumptions. We're assuming that because there are six, there's, we're not going to be able to do it all. But we really don't know what we want to do in each area and how much time and effort it's going to take for each one. So I would say let's do that exercise first and then see if we want to scale back.
Okay. Other thoughts? Yes.
I will concur with that. I think, you know, with that being said of folks, if there is consensus around getting a, a deeper understanding of what each of these categories really means, that we might be at a good breaking point, to let this resonate, come back to our next time. And if we want to win a win even more, we can win a win, but we'll have that deeper understanding of what each of these really means and maybe even have a more fleshed out definition.
Yes, Mayor Biss.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding that recommendation. Does, so we have now six items. Each one's got a few sentences describing it. Dr. Logan had spoken at the top of this session about then handing those off to staff to then prepare measurable goals for our consideration. My question is, are you saying do that with these six? And, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. I just want to name that it's going to be pretty hard to, you know, to name a name associated with the number six vote getter. It's going to be pretty hard to go tell Ike and his team, give us a, you know, turn this into a list of, of measurable goals. And then after that, we say, eh, that's not, that's not on our priority list.
I mean.
And I would say there are, one reason I'm lobbying, not just about the E Plan, but lobbying as much as that for public health is because we are, we are in the middle of working on something, myself, uh, Director Ogbo, Director Flax and members of our community, health community, on a, I think, a really big initiative similar to the Guaranteed Income Program. And so I think we're, I think he's ready to show us something that, uh, that we could kind of measure and focus on for the, for the next year or two. So, um, I, I don't think it'll be, you know, time wasted, is, I guess is, is what I'm saying.
Do you feel that would get lost if that wasn't on this, if it went from six to five?
I think it's different than equity and even finance. There's some real money involved, like some real money, you know? And, um, it's the difference between do we put that towards a health program or a public safety one or a CARP one or whatever? There's, there's real money involved for sure. So I think it, it needs to be up there so we, we know whether or not we're willing to, you know, make that commitment.
Okay, so, so did I understand, so, so you feel that that's not under, that that's potentially compromised?
Because of the money that's involved.
Because of the money? Okay.
Because of the money.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I agree with what Councilmember Reed said. I think similar to how we had before we narrowed, we had like a exercise before we narrowed. I think we should have another exercise before we narrow again. And that could be staff coming, you know, kind of looking into these and then, and then we can come back at the next meeting and see if we want to continue to narrow.
Okay.
And, and while, while I will also say this is important, uh, because our group had CARP as.
I'm sorry, right, what's important?
What, what Bobby was just saying. And our, our group had CARP and, uh, our definition was achieve our 2025 goals. Um, and we started looking through some of those 2025 goals. And to be quite honest, I don't know how achievable by 2025 some of those are. Um, and so I think having staff, you know, go back and look at this and maybe, unfortunately, maybe CARP drops off because we just realized we can't meet our 2025 goal. And I'm not saying, I'm sorry, and I, CARP was one of my top things too.
Hypothetical.
Hypothetically, yeah, of course.
To be, to be clear, we haven't finalized the list of 2025 goals. In the whole process of, or 2023 goals, rather, the whole process of developing these goals as it was last year was intended to include staff so that we are not committing to more than we're capable of doing.
That's a good point. So if, what I'm hearing is we have these six, we work with these six, pass it on to staff, allow them to, to do what they do, to provide some more substance. I would say meat, but I'm a vegan. So some, some more substance to it for further consideration. Because the process, because, because this, because it is a process, it, it hasn't defined and been ended there. Is that, are we, is that, is there any dissension on that? Any consent? I'm sorry, you going to make a comment or?
The only one I could see that would, we could do the similar thing that we did with equity would be to include finance. Because that should be a part of all our operations to drop that off. I don't know how, what the feeling would, that people have on that. Because like Bobby said.
Be too many people that aren't prepared to do that, which is why I haven't even made that case. You know, so I think just for the sake of consensus, just moving all three along for now. I mean, six, I'm sorry.
So.
But I agree with you.
Yes, so, okay, so then, so that sounds like a good spot. We reached it, right? So we got these six, going to pass it on to staff, allow them to develop some metrics and some more substance to it, bring it back to you all for further consideration. And then at that point, something might come off the priority list, something might be merged. I mean, anything can happen at that point, but so it's not over. And the things that are not on the priority list now, not that they're not important, but again, we, we have to start somewhere and there are limited resources. And this is just simply saying, here's where we're going to start, here's our focus for the next couple of years. Is that correct? Yes.
So I have a question because those seem like really broad strokes and our staff is already overtaxed. And I, I, I hear with the mayor, I had to say, I'm, I'm worried about just saying, come up with something for housing. I'm wondering if we, not here today, but we have these bullet points. Are we going to provide them with those as well? Are we going to recreate them now that we have different definitions? But I, I just think that is, um, we're not being responsible, council members. If we just give them these broad strokes, say, come up with something, they come up with some, bring it back and we're like, yep, nope, we don't. That wasn't the direction we want to go in. So I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. And just for a point of clarification, my understanding is that staff would have. is that staff would have all of that, but I can't speak to that. Mayor Bis?
You know, certainly, it's, I think, critical for us to hear from Luke on this question. My own instinct is that Luke was here for this whole session, Allison was here for almost the entire session. We have, we, you know, we've written out these definitions, we have the bullets from before. I think we'll be available, speaking for myself, all my personnel is available to work with staff on these, I think. And, you know, to Dr. Logan's point, we're handing these to the starters matter experts who are already engaged in this work. It's not, it's not, they, they don't live in a blank slate either. So I, I, my instinct is that we're giving them enough to go on. But Luke, do you want to weigh in on this?
I think Councilmember Harris makes a great point. They are large buckets. But to the mayor's point, we do have a lot of notes, especially from the first session. I think we have enough to go on to get started. And obviously, we're going to be bringing back our recommendations to you all. And I'm, I'm sure there'll be edits and suggestions, additions and deletions. And then we can further refine from there.
Okay. Okay. We got, we got the endorsement from Allison. It is done. Okay, so are we, are we, are we good? We got a good stopping point? And it's time to spare? Like, is it time for another debate? Well, I mean, it's, it's 10 after, we're near in time, but the time's not the relevant point. I think it's the progress that we made. And again, I just want to underscore, going back from the beginning of our first session, all the way till now, it has not been, it's never a neat process, really. And it's meant to kind of roll your sleeves up and get a little sloppy and messy, but respectful. And I feel that we've been able to do that. And I, I think you all have, I know that you all have made a lot of well-thought-out, well-intended progress. And, you know, I just hope you can recognize the work that you've done. Because I mean, this looks real simple here, right? But it's, we know what's so simple is not always easy, and how complicated it can be. So I just want to recognize you all for the work that you did, the time that you put into the process. And I appreciate you all adhering to the process. It's not a perfect process, but we worked it out. We figured it out, we got some outcomes, got something to work with, and so the process goes. We'll take it to the next stage. And you all will have some considerations to move forward with, to consider, I'm sorry, some recommendations to consider to move forward with. So, yeah, Mayor Bis?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to you, thank you to the entire council for engaging so seriously with this discussion. Thank you to Clerk Mendoza, to Luke, to Allison. It's really important, it's really, really critical for us. And I think, thank you to the public, all, all members of the public for participating. You know, initially, each, each member of the public had the burden of representing 26,000 community members. And shortly after, we had one person representing all 78. So, good work. And given that, and knowing that we still have important work ahead on this topic, there's nothing further to come before us today. The January 14 special meeting of the Evans City Council stands adjourned.
All right, good job, you all. And I've already heard from a community member, some very positive feedback from this session already. Yeah. So congratulations.